The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the November Joint Meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council. If you'd like to, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the interest of social distancing, we have pared down the number of people that are in chambers with us tonight, and our city clerk and our assistant clerk will be monitoring the meeting from their offices down the hall. So I will be calling the joint meeting agenda for tonight. The first item is the approval of minutes of the regular joint meeting that was held on October 13th, 2020.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. Items 2A through L. Would any members of the joint meeting like to pull any of these items off for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
Move to approve, second.
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to transfer $25,455 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for a Hearst tool for the Fire Department.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to transfer $10,185 from the General Fund Contingency Account for the city match of the 2020 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5 is to make additional appropriations totaling $20,370 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for the 2020 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is to transfer $127,000 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for Board of Education Technology Equipment.
Move approval.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, to make an additional appropriation of $1,500 within the Emergency Management Operating Budget for the federal share of the EMPG grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8, to make additional appropriations of $24,728 within the General Fund as of June 30th, 2020, for the Permanent Patch Program.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, to decrease appropriations totaling $152,822 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is to make transfers totaling $277,108 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, to make additional appropriations totaling $1,069 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, to adopt in a single motion the resolutions making appropriations and authorizing borrowings for the following capital projects: District-wide technology replacement; muzzy field restoration; landfill erosion repairs; the design of the North Main Street streetscape improvements; the preliminary planning and design of the Route 72 corridor improvements; and the design of the City Hall building restoration; and to waive the reading of the resolutions but to include them as part of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, through the chair, please. This is Cheryl. Just as I mentioned in the Board of Finance meeting, I just wanted also to be recorded that in the minutes that the City Hall building restorations is just for us to see the cost to do the City Hall and is not a blanket approval of future cost to go down. So I just wanted to go on record with that in my thoughts. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is Agenda Item 13, which is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
We need a roll call vote for the last one, number 12 with the resolutions.
Okay, I didn't read it that way, Therese, because it said to adopt in a single motion, but we can definitely do that. So we're going to go back to Agenda Item 12 for a moment, and we are going to vote on this resolution by roll call. We'll start with the people that are in the chambers, and if you could say your name before your vote, that would be helpful to the city clerk.
John Smith, yes.
Greg Hahn, yes.
Scott Rosato, yes.
Dave Proleski, yes.
Brittany Barney, yes.
Mary Fortier, yes.
Peter Kelly, yes.
John Mace, yes.
Peter Kelly and John Mace have voted yes from their seats in the audience. And now we are going to go, I can't see this, to the screen. Commissioner Tebow?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Who else is up there? Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Calfee?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody? Okay, the resolution for Agenda Item 12 is approved on the roll call vote. Back to the Controller's report.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report. Not too much, we're pretty much in line with where we were last year at this time. Tax revenues are still coming in strong, and next month I hope to have for you some graphics of the tax collections. The tax collector had an upgrade to her system, and she actually has sent a couple of samples of some different reports. So I think, just to jazz it up a little bit, I might include them in next month's report, because it'll give you some comparisons of personal property tax, real estate, and the motor vehicle, and where we are with collections. So next month, we'll have that refined, and we'll include that in this report. The building permits and the conveyance taxes, again, are still coming in very strong. Building permits are at 57.5% and conveyance is at 68%. Last year, we were around 62 and 51%. So those continue to come in strong, and as noted, our investment income is not achieving where we should be at this point, but that's to be expected. Rates are very low right now. On the expenditure side, only thing I want to know, you'll notice there are some COVID accounts that are overspent. We will be applying to FEMA and/or the State Coronavirus Relief Fund for those. We have asked today, actually, we asked all of the department heads to plan ahead, get all of their costs in. They have to have everything purchased by December 10th, because we need to pay the invoice by December 30th, otherwise we cannot ask for reimbursement on any of that. So some of those accounts that you see that might be over expended, they're either going to be reimbursed through either the FEMA grant, Coronavirus Relief Fund, or some other grants, like the elect, the registrars have received some grants, and town clerk. So those will, additional appropriations will come forward, probably to the Board of Finance within the next couple of months. I want to talk about the FEMA and the Coronavirus Relief Fund for a minute. Just to give you some numbers, we did submit to FEMA $424,000. We knew we had to pull out about $95,000, roughly $103,000 we pulled out. Right now, we have sitting with FEMA, waiting for some determination, $377,000. If they reimburse 75% of that, the balance of that will go to the state. So we hope that FEMA will reimburse us $282,000, and that the state will reimburse approximately $94,000. That is what is still pending. We did submit a reimbursement request to the state. We had to do that by October 30th. I was pleased. About a week later, we did receive notice that they did accept it, and they did approve the submission. The submission was for $146,000. 37 of that, though, was for the Bristol Burlington Health District, because what FEMA did not cover for them, we were able to submit to the state for. So hopefully, that check will be coming soon. But we did receive approval, at least on the city side, $108,000 of the costs that we have incurred so far. That's what I have on the FEMA. Does anybody have any additional questions on that? It has been, and I have to thank the department heads, the department staff, all departments, my staff. It was a very onerous process putting FEMA, the state reimbursement together, and it requested a lot of information. So it was a lot of input. So the next step is, is we hope that the state will open up the second round. These costs were through June 30th. Once they open that up, we'll be able to submit for whatever we've spent through December. So hopefully, there should be money left, because our estimate was about $1.36 million, and we aren't even close to that, so.
Is it your impression that they might have allocated for the communities based on those initial applications that we sent in anticipating costs?
I believe they did, based on my conversations with them, that they did. But that $1.36 million also included a lot of costs for the Board of Education, which we found out later, we could not submit through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. A lot of that went through their CARES Act money. So a good portion of that was a lot of the laptops or the Chromebooks that they bought. But I still think that we're not anywhere close to what we had thought we were going to spend during that initial estimate. Any other questions on FEMA COVID?
We'll start in chambers. Are there any members of the joint meeting that have questions of the Controller? Is there anybody online who is calling into the meeting that has questions for the Controller?
I do have two other items. That was just all FEMA. So the auditors' last physical day probably is today, and we're hoping that they will, we're really hoping that we can get an audit done late November, at least a draft late November, early December. A lot of it depends on other reports that we get, basically from the actuaries. We're waiting on that right now. So that's where we are with the auditors, and budget packages are being put together. Can't wait. So that'll be coming forward soon. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. If there is no other business, then a motion to adjourn would be in order for the joint meeting.
Move adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We are going to move right into our City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 10th. It is approximately 7:00 in chambers. And so I'd like to ask those of you who are joining us to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my, let's see, far left. We'll allow Councilman Kelly some time to get to his seat.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Greg Hahn, District 1. Peter Kelly, District 2.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. Tonight, for our moment of reflection, two items. First, a moment of reflection to all of the people who ran for office last week, who will be representing us, as well as to those candidates who put their names forward and were not successful. Public service is not for the lighthearted. And so we appreciate everyone's opportunities to run in a democracy, and we hope that everybody continues to work for the best interests of Bristol in whatever office that they're holding. Second, I did want to take a moment, because right before our meeting, we had a very serious traffic accident on Terryville Road at Barlow, which required the start team, life star, and response by fire, police, and EMS. So if we can just keep those people involved in that in our thoughts and prayers today, it sounded like a very serious situation that was evolving. So again, a moment of reflection for that, as well as the work of our first responders every day. Thank you. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, for people who may just be joining us, either in chambers or on the call or via our WebEx link, that due to social distancing, we have very few people in chambers tonight, and we are being serviced by our city clerk and our assistant town clerk, who are operating from their offices down the hall. We also have some of our legal counsel operating from the Corporation Council's office on the third floor. So we are all linked in order to maintain appropriate social distancing here in the council chambers. The first item on our agenda for tonight is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on October 13th, 2020, and the special City Council meeting that was held on September 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on those two sets of minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next item is public participation, and no one has signed up to participate. So first, I will ask in chambers, is there anybody here who would like to address the City Council? Is there anybody that is on the call that would like to address the City Council during public participation? I would also ask that if you're listening in on the meeting, if you could please mute yourselves to reduce the amount of background noise that we are getting in chambers. Is there anybody on the call who would like to address the City Council? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to announcements, and I will start on my left. Are there any announcements?
The only one I have, Your Honor, is simply to thank everyone that worked on the election. Our town and city clerk and our registrars literally worked months due to the specialness of this election, the unprecedented nature of how we, you know, conducted the election. And there were, in addition to our regular poll workers who are hired every year, we had additional workers hired in order to sort all the absentee ballots that we anticipated and did receive. So they worked long hours, they were diligent, and just so interested in making sure that the election happened, and that it was fair and timely. And I just want to thank all of them, because it was certainly an unprecedented effort on their part, and it makes our very important ability to vote possible.
Thank you. Councilwoman Barney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't really have any particular announcements, and I'm sure it'll probably get mentioned again, but since tomorrow is Veterans Day, I just wanted to say thank you to anyone that's watching or has served, or that's in the audience, or just any general veterans in the city of Bristol. Thank you for your service and for fighting for our freedom, and we appreciate you. And I'm sure there'll be plenty of great ways to celebrate you tomorrow, even virtually. So thank everyone for their service, but other than that, that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Proleski, announcements?
No, thank you, just a ditto with my two counsel persons before me said. Nice to meet you, done.
Moving on to Councilman Rosato?
No, no, thank you. Again, a ditto to Brittany and Mary, please.
Councilman Hahn, announcements?
Yes, I have two quick announcements. First of all, for Veterans Day, there was a ceremony recorded by Nutmeg TV here in Bristol, featuring our citizens and the Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble, and quite a few people, and the mayor, quite a few people came together so that we could still have a service. So I encourage everyone to take a look at Nutmeg TV tomorrow. It's also available on their website. Also, recently, you remember, we did, the City Arts and Culture Commission did a project with the electrical boxes downtown, where we did images of Bristol's history, and we had an unveiling, and it was featured on TV. Well, before that, we had artists actually go around and paint and use those electrical boxes as their canvas. There's one located down in Forestville, and it was requested that we take that, because it was weathering, and make it a more permanent medium. So we used the same process for shrink wrap. And so this coming Saturday, the City Arts and Culture Commission will be unveiling the newly refurbished traffic box in Forestville Center. The commission corroborated with, collaborated with artist James Gaffney, who did the original painting. And it's co-sponsored by the generosity of Broadview Manor Fund. It will be at Quidlin Park Saturday at noon, so I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Yes, Your Honor, I have an update on the Miners Farm Solar Array. The Verge Solar One Project received unanimous approval from the Connecticut Siding Council during their November 5th meeting. And it was an energy and telecommunications meeting. And they had begun the building and electrical permit review process with the building and engineering departments, and will be sharing similar updates with these departments shortly. And as it relates to the Connecticut Deep, they are in the process of completing their stormwater construction and general permit, and have had positive feedback from that agency as well. And they will keep the entire Bristol team up to date on the permitting process, as they currently anticipate a start of construction for late winter, early spring of 2021.
Okay, thank you. So that's the solar array for Miners Farm.
Yes, it is.
And there's also one planned for the Roberts Orchards that is below, which I believe is, already received some of their permits.
Exactly.
I have a couple of quick announcements. I first want to say that we've had so many city employees, Bristol Allheart volunteers, members of the United Way team helping us with the Farmers to Families food distribution. And since July, we've distributed over 16,000 boxes of food in those various collections, in all types of weather and all types of conditions. We are right now trying to see where Bristol fits in what is called the Stage 4 of Farmers to Families. And we were, Donna Osatch from the United Way and I were on a Zoom call this morning. They are changing things and doing a distribution that may have a regional look, where we would either have to participate there or go there and take the boxes back to Bristol. We had tentatively planned to have Farmers to Families this Saturday, November 14th, but I'd like to say right now that I'm not sure that that will happen, and if it does, it will be pretty much a game day decision. But we are trying to secure additional dates to bring more food into the community, because we have seen that food insecurity is a real issue with COVID, with people on fixed incomes, with people in quarantine, with people who have less ability to move around or endure, receive help from others. So we are going to keep everyone posted on when that next date is. Also, another essential service that was allowed to operate through the governor's executive orders has been our farmers markets. And we did conclude a 20-week schedule on the last day of October. To date, we are unaware if any contact tracing involved the farmers market. We had very high compliance with people observing social distancing, wearing masks, and observing all of the rules that we set down. If the infection rate continues the way that it is and/or we have inclement weather, we will probably not have the farmers market that is scheduled for November 21st, but I did want to put that date out there. It is our hope that we have it, but I do want to qualify it right now that there are other factors that might intervene. But if it does happen, it would be Saturday, November 21st, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. But that, again, is to be determined, and simply just to save the date with the hope that we might be able to do that as we have in the past few years. The big news tonight, however, is that finally, after many months, the Economic and Community Development Director today, Justin Malley, was informed by our friends of the management team at Bristol Plaza that they have successfully signed a lease for the Savers space, and the Burlington Coat Factory will be joining Bristol for fall of 2021. So with the struggles that we have with retail, especially along Route 6, which is our main corridor, this is a major win for Bristol. And I just want to stress again that the collaboration and communication that we receive from Federal Realty, which is the management group of Bristol Plaza, is really unsurpassed. And I wish that we had that same relationship with some of the other plazas. So we'd like to congratulate them also on the opening of Asian Bistro, which is a new eatery there. And we're also continuing to work with them on the Pier 1 space, which they also manage, which is across the street from Bristol Plaza. So I know that in some cases, it's been not a best-kept secret, but for those who had started to hear the whispers, it is true, and Burlington Coat Factory will be joining us in Bristol next year. There's no other announcements. We will move on to the Consent Calendar. There are three items. Is there anything on the Consent Calendar that council members would like to pull off for additional discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, items 5A through C?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports and committee reports, we'll start with the Real Estate Committee. Councilman Hahn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion. I hereby move that the city of Bristol seek requests for proposal for the disposition of property owned by the city known as Lot 6, 7, and 8, Witch's Rock Road, on Map 8 of the Bristol Assessors Office, and that the purchasing agent be authorized to request proposals, and that he send out a press release in addition to the legal notices and update the city website. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion concerning Witch's Rock Road.
Yes, Your Honor, we've, just quickly, we've had this on the books for quite a while, and we were working with an agent, and we didn't have too much success. So the Real Estate Committee decided to shake it up a little bit and put it out for RFP, and my understanding is that there may be some interest.
That'd be great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other Real Estate Committee business?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on to the Ordinance Committee. Councilman Proleski?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two referrals from the Ordinance Committee that we're asking to the establishment of two public hearings. I hereby move that the time and place of December 1, 2020, at 4:45 PM in the first floor meeting room, City Hall 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee regarding Sections 2-33, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter. Your Honor, this is a follow-up from the work done by the Charter Revision Committee regarding the establishment of a personnel committee. Our committee worked with our Human Resources Director, Mark Penny, and Corporation Council- with our Human Resources Director, Mark Penny, and Corporation Council to establish the ordinance, and we're prepared for the public hearing.
Okay, great.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. The second is the, I hereby move the time and place of December 1, 2020, at 4:50 PM at the first floor meeting room, 111, City Hall 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee regarding Ordinance Section 19-16 through 19-19, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Court of Ordinances as required by the city charter. Your Honor, this is a amendments to the charter that was promoted by Chief Gould, who had this language approved by his, by the Police Commission, and he also worked with the committee. Thank you, Chief. And he also worked with Corporation Council. It establishes routines that are actually how they do business. And so it updates the charter in that regard. The chief was very interested in changing some language. His second tier of command have been called captains, and he has asked that they be called deputy chiefs, to give them more authority, either with outsiders, third parties, vendors, and things like that nature.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to other committee reports, is there a Memorial Boulevard report? Councilman Proleski?
Briefly, Your Honor. The committee continues to meet. The demolition stage is finished. In the second stage, which I talked about last month regarding the budget and the establishment of bids for the majority of the work within the building is complete. Contracts and contractors are beginning. If you've driven by the building, you'll see that the next phase, which is site work, is well underway. I'm sure some of our phones have rang, because the, the trees around the building have been taken down. But it really shows the prominence of that building, I think, now as a major artifice, artifice in the Boulevard. There is a landscaping plan to replace what's been done, and everything is underway. Really, that's, the meeting, the committee continues to meet monthly, and I'll have a report for you next month.
Great, thank you. Moving to my left, Councilwoman Fordy, are any committee reports?
I do have one, Your Honor. As most of you know, I have been the liaison and representing Bristol on the Board of HRA. When I first became a councilwoman, I was in that capacity with the BCO, the Bristol Community Organization. And HRA of New Britain merged with BCO. So they cover, I think it's nine communities now. We recently lost our executive director the beginning of this year, right before COVID. We had an interim director. That gentleman was a retired person from another community action agency, and he was scheduled to only be a part-time person. And again, COVID made things very, you know, difficult for the last few months. But I'm very pleased to announce that we've finally named our new executive director, and it's Marlo Grapan. And Marlo is a longtime employee of HRA. She, most people would say that she has been the face of HRA for a long, long time. And during the process of the, and it was a nationwide search that we did, we had a candidate from Northwestern Connecticut that was a finalist, and we had a candidate from New York State that was a finalist, both highly qualified. But during the process, I found out for the first time that Marlo had been a Head Start parent about 30 years ago. That's how she got involved with HRA. She was a parent. She became a teaching assistant, went to school, became a teacher in the Head Start program, and then worked her way up. She has several master's degrees at this point, and she has been the Director of Policy and Planning for the time period that I've been involved, the last seven years. She's an enthusiastic person with great skills, and in addition, she's the whole reason HRA exists, to bring children of poverty and their families out of poverty and into success stories. So she's the ultimate success story for HRA, and we're just overjoyed that she's our new executive director. That's it.
She made her first official appearance in Bristol last night during our CDBG public hearing, so it was great to see her. I think she'll be great for Bristol and hopefully tighten that relationship between our communities and make sure we get our resources appropriately. Councilwoman Barney, any committee reports?
I do have one report, Your Honor. I was very lucky to be able to bring the city council to the fire department's training center, where we met with Captain Blashke and Chief Flynn, who's in the audience tonight. And it was pretty exciting, because we were able to kind of have the experience of what a firefighter goes through for their training regimen. And it's really intense. And I thought it was great to give the experience to the council, so they could kind of understand a little bit more when we see these purchase requests come through, what exactly they're going towards. So everybody, it was a great sport. Everybody held the gear, which is incredibly heavy. Imagining that increasing your ambient temperature, temperature 30 to 40 degrees is incredible. When you think about firefighters in the summertime, going into burning blazes, feeling like they're in 120 degrees, getting down on the ground, shuffling through to try to save a family. And it's, it's pretty amazing. They filled it up with smoke. Councilman Kelly almost, I thought, was going to get down and crawl. He was very close. But lots of great equipment, and we're really lucky to have our firefighters. And thankfully, they've been doing a lot to try to protect their health during COVID. So we made sure, you know, we stayed distanced, we had our masks and everything. So I think we did it very safely. And I'm, and I'm glad the, the Fire Board actually said, Commissioner Jandro, that he's been trying to get the city council to do this for years. And in his memory, it was the first time the whole council had gone to do something like that. So I know it was appreciated by the Board of Commissioners as well. So it was a wonderful experience, and I'm sure they will echo my sentiments. I promised them a fun time, and I think it was indeed a fun time. Next time, we will repel. That will be the next thing.
And if I can just add, Council, Councilperson Barney was the only one to wear, actually, the helmet.
This is true.
Councilman Rosado and Han were concerned about messing their hair, so they passed on that.
Indeed, they did. But, but yes, so if you'd like to see pictures, head to Facebook, because it was very fun and entertaining. And kudos to Captain Blashke for the work he does to make sure we have a well-trained and well-equipped fire department, as well as Chief Flynn. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you all set, Councilman Proleski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Rosado?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to piggyback off of what Brittany talked about in her announcements. This is a perfect time to acknowledge our veterans, as tomorrow is Veterans Day. We have to understand our veterans have given and continue to give up their freedom so that we can have ours. They answered a call to protect our nation in ways we can never imagine. And for their sacrifices and commitment to our country as a whole, please take time to thank a veteran and thank them for their service, not only tomorrow, but every day. To all veterans and active serving member, service members, we truly thank you from the bottom of our hearts from the city of Bristol. On behalf of the Bristol Veterans Council, I'd like to thank the following for their dedication to our veterans. First and foremost, Nutmeg TV. I can't thank you guys enough for all you've done to support the veterans as a whole. And it's only fair to recognize you and thank you for your commitment. While the COVID has dampened many events this year, you've graciously taped both our Memorial and Veteran Day ceremonies, as well as placing an advertisement with the Bristol Press. We thank you for that. While practicing social distancing, you had to meet at many different times to record various speeches and music selections, then edit to make it picture perfect for all of us to enjoy. And I believe those, those will be aired tomorrow, three different times. This year's veteran ceremony will have some special guests that I'd like to mention and thank as well for their continued support. The Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble and their director, Rich Thereal, whom I've provided the music selection in conjunction with Ray Talion?
Talion.
Talion? Who's actually singing, he'll be doing some, some singing, and he's actually in his early 90s, and will sing the National Anthem in America the Beautiful. I believe he's a voice to be reckoned with at his age. That's great. The band will also play a melody of military service songs for us to enjoy. I also want to mention the American Legion Post Two Honor Guard. They travel across the state to provide to any veteran whom passes away a proper burial. The military funeral honors is performed, and that consists of taps and a rightful salute. To date, this year, they've done over 250 funerals and expect to do over 300 this year. Thank you, guys, for giving these heroes the respect they deserve. I can't thank you all for ensuring that this Veterans Day will be one remembered in the city of Bristol. On behalf of the Bristol Police Commission, I'd like to congratulate the following officers, whom just have graduated the New Britain Police Academy. Officers Monica Finkel, Samantha Kiss, and Mary Jo Fisher. I'm proud to say that Monica Finkel was honored and received an award for top academics. She graduated with the highest GPA in this academic session. Congratulations to her. We look forward to having them as part of our community and support their choice to protect and serve. For park and wrecks, we've just completed a virtual forum of our master plan that was held on October 28. We had over 25 participants asking questions and weighing in on, on different topics to make our parks beautiful. Muzzy Park Field renovations are moving forward smoothly. The lights are in, infield mix is in, and with this weather, I believe they're finishing up the irrigation. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Councilman Han?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to have a report on the Energy Commission activities. Recently, their dedication to energy conservation and green technology, we've been working with Sustainable Connecticut to get a rating of Silver for the city of Bristol. Well, we've swung at that a couple of times and missed in the past, because it is, only three other cities have attained the Silver status for Sustainable Connecticut. And this last time, for 2020, we did achieve our Silver status. It's, it's an incredible achievement. Only, like I said, only other four municipalities have done it, New Britain, Stratford, Weathersfield, and Old Saybrook. You have to get 400 points, but we did receive over 500, 550 points, 555 to be exact. And the things that they took into consideration were things like the projects to reduce our energy costs through efficient lighting. Also, the Solar For All program, which was actually, actually had a space on WTNH Tonight that was featured, that Bristol was doing an incredible job. And we have over 100 families in Bristol that took advantage of that Solar For All program. And then finally, also, CPTV did a program in September highlighting the work of Public Works and Lindsay Rivers for the outdoor classrooms that we have here. So it was a tremendous effort. It was not an easy effort, and we're looking forward to going for gold, although they have not figured out what the parameters are for gold yet. But I'd like to congratulate all those on the Energy Commission and all those in Public Works and everywhere in the Bristol that had a hand in gaining this honor. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to unfinished business. The one item that I would like to bring on to the table tonight, although I'm sure that we're all sick of hearing about it, is the COVID situation in Bristol. This morning, we had our biweekly emergency call consisting of department heads in order to continue to discuss and collaborate and share resources and discuss strategies. Right now, we probably have four departments that have, five departments that have a series of employees in quarantine. And through these discussions, you know, everyone talks about the, the positive infection rate. But what we're struggling with really, in terms of creating strategies, is the fact that a quarantine through close contact can completely cripple a department and its operations. So between our emergency responders and our critical infrastructure, Public Works, water and sewer, which have to be on call, and in some cases have 24-hour operations, it's become a real challenge. So again, I would just like to take tonight and this soapbox to try to encourage people within the community to understand the severity of what we're dealing with. This is a very easily communicable transmitted disease. And even those who are asymptomatic, they're the ones who are probably spreading without even knowing it, and not willingly, obviously, but not knowing that it's happening. Marco Palmary, who is our Health Director for the Bristol Burlington District, does have some stats that he put together that he shared with us this morning, and I thought it was interesting that I'd like to just reiterate tonight. Our Bristol population of 60,000 people represents 1.7% of the total state of Connecticut population. Currently, as of today, Bristol coincidentally has 1.7% of all COVID-19-related deaths within the state. We are currently at 79, or the state is about 4,600. Bristol has 1.4% of all the COVID-19 cases in the state. Bristol residents ages 40 to 59 years of age are the most often identified as COVID-positive. Bristol residents took 1.6% of all of the COVID tests in the state. And recently, Bristol children ages 0 to 18 years old surpassed the young adult age group, which is 19 to 25, in new COVID cases during October and November. 35 cases for children and 34 cases for young adults. And then the most discussed topic, youth sports. They are now associated with 22% of Bristol's COVID cases. So I think that those are some data pieces that we have to really take to heart. We are looking to make modifications. We are looking to continue to try to do in-person school. It is important to note that there has been no in-school transmission to date, even though several schools have had to go to virtual learning, and that there have been quarantines in place at almost all of the schools at one point since September. However, none of them have been identified as in-school transmissions to date. We end our fall sports season on Friday. Winter sports is on pause. And then some interesting school stats right now. Since September, sports-related exposures have caused approximately 342 Bristol students to miss in school learning. Since September, 842 Bristol school students have been removed from school as a result of a COVID-19-related incident. And since September, 414 Bristol school students have had a COVID test. So these are things that we really want to encourage people to take seriously, to be tested. And for those who have tested positive, it is imperative that you quarantine. And sadly, we do have members of our community who have tested positive and have resisted the quarantine, which again is aiding in the infection rates going up. With Thanksgiving upon us, this is an even more important message, because people's urge to be with family and friends and to celebrate and to commemorate Thanksgiving together is going to cause even a larger spike, which we've already seen CDC talking about this, as well as the Department of Public Health. So I do want to just yield this report over to Councilwoman Kelly to maybe just share with the audience some Thanksgiving items that we'd like people to really take under consideration.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Speaking specifically of holiday gatherings, Thanksgiving coming up, it's really important that we have a game plan and not just roll into Thanksgiving as if it's any other, other Thanksgiving, because it's not. And getting together for the holidays involves weighing the risks and the benefits. And no gathering during the pandemic is going to be 100% safe, but we can take steps to mitigate the risk. And the role is to decrease the risk and not to make life impossible. And infections spread easily in small gatherings, but that doesn't mean that we have to cancel Thanksgiving. Big gatherings are a terrible idea, but there are alternatives to this. And some of them are just limit, limiting the size of the gathering and keep it to people that are in your regular orbit, not are in your regular orbit, not people that, not relatives that are coming from California or people we normally don't associate with. And we also want to increase access to fresh air, opening doors, opening windows, opening everything up. If you have an air filtration system, use that. Utilize porches and decks. Hopefully, the weather's going to be decent going forward, and be outside whenever possible. Try eating, if you have eight people over that are in your orbit, try breaking up those groups into small groups. And if your floor plan in your home allows, socially distance inside. And this is going to be tough because when I read it, I got most of this information from an article in the Boston Globe. And when I read this one, I said, "Well, this is going to be tough, but it's necessary." Wear masks inside. And it's tough. It's tough to talk. It's tough to socialize, but it's really, really important. And also, we are aware that there are hazards to zero risk since isolation and depression can be almost as debilitating as the virus itself. So, we really have to have a game plan, stick to it, and implement it. Because our goal here is to keep socializing but mitigate the possibility of being infected with the virus. And people that contributed to this Globe article I read were epidemiologists, virologists, Dr. Fauci, an infectious disease specialist. So, this isn't just somebody's opinion. These are expert opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, although I don't have Marco's report with me, the current number of positive cases in Bristol as of, I believe, yesterday's count is 1,149. And just as a comparison, in October, the number of positives for Bristol was 278. And to date, on November 10th, we are already in the mid-70s. So, clearly, this month is going to be a battleground in terms of the spikes and the transmission rates. So, it's real. It's real, especially for our elderly and those with comorbidities and that are a vulnerable population. So, for those of you who are not interested in masks and all of the social distancing for yourselves, please think about doing it for a loved one or someone else's loved one because that's really what it's coming down to at this point. Thank you, Councilman Kelly.
Thank you.
Is there any other unfinished business to come before the City Council from council members? Okay, we're going to move on to new business. We have one item. It is the consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the City Treasurer and the mayor pertaining to operational oversight of staff in the City Hall Treasurer's office. So, I believe the memorandum of opinion that was authored by Attorney Clift was circulated earlier. This has been the subject of a conversation since, I believe, last January. And because of the complexity of our charter and the interconnection between the Board of Finance, as well as the checks and balances, this took a long time for Attorney Clift to work through. And I'd like to just take a moment and thank the Controller for pointing out some of the issues that we needed to resolve. I'd like to thank the legal staff, especially Attorney Clift. I'd like to thank John Smith, who's the Chairman of the Board of Finance and has been also very instrumental. Mark Penny from the Human Resources. And specifically, I'd like to thank Tom Barnes, who's our City Treasurer. He has just really been very much at the forefront of ensuring that there is a bipartisan approach to best practices and ensuring that all of that we do within the Treasurer's office is working. And so, he has signed off on this memorandum as of this afternoon. In brief, it simply talks about some of the items that will be transferred over to the Controller. Pursuant to this memorandum of agreement, the Treasurer of the City of Bristol delegates the following day-to-day oversight of operational functions within the Treasurer's office to the City Controller. These include routine supervisory oversight of personnel matters, supervision and guidance to ensure that fiscal controls and procedures are maintained and followed to achieve the best practices, goals, and to ensure accuracy. Examples include, but are not limited to, review of pension benefit calculations, reviewing biweekly and monthly pension payrolls, and the review of our cash account reconciliations. There's also going to be guidance and oversight of the administration of the cash management practices, as well as guidance and oversight of the Deputy Treasurer and matters pertaining to office operations and management. So, I think that this will really strengthen the financial operations. It is also something that we're putting in place that is slightly related to, but not really, but I guess tangential to the proposed reorganization of some of our financial divisions that we'll be talking about later. So, again, just, these are the types of things that we, as an administration, have talked about that are important to honor the pieces of the charter, but also strengthen what happens on a day-to-day basis and ensure transparency, accountability, and the highest standards. So, again, a special acknowledgement of our City Treasurer, who has mentioned to many of us that this is most likely his last term. I think that it could definitely be said and shared by all, regardless of political party, that he has always put the best interest of the Office of the Treasurer and our pension fund at the forefront of his actions. And this memorandum is just another example of that strong working relationship that we've enjoyed with him. So, I know that many of you only had this afternoon to review it. I will open it to questions if anybody has any. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Okay. I can give it to... I don't know what that is, so... Okay, is there a motion?
Your Honor, I hereby move that the Mayor, Ellen A. Zappo Sasso, or Acting Mayor, be authorized to sign a memorandum of agreement with the City Treasurer, Thomas O. Barnes, Jr., delegating day-to-day oversight of operational functions in the City Hall's Treasurer's office to the City Comptroller.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Attorney Clift, is there anything you'd like to offer?
Well, I think my memorandum speaks for itself. It is interesting that the roles of the Comptroller and the Treasurer are, they derive from different areas of the charter, but they really do complement each other. And given the issues with the smallness of the staff, the fact that the Treasurer is an elected part-time position, with the present-day requirements under our generally-accepted auditing principles and the governmental auditing standards, accounting principles, excuse me, it's very difficult to comply. And, you know, I've...
Can you speak directly into the microphone?
Sure. I've been in various meetings, and there are concerns on the part of the auditors. So, again, this is something that the Treasurer did not have to agree to, but he did and wants to do this. And I was given the task of simply determining whether or not there was any prohibition in the charter whereby the Treasurer could not delegate these things. I think there are certain things that the Treasurer may not delegate. They pertain more to policy. But for certain day-to-day, very carefully circumscribed operational functions... And again, just to give you an example, the Treasurer, it says in the charter that the Treasurer is the custodian and is in charge of dispersing all of the funds. Well, he delegates that kind of thing, too. So, it's not, you must personally do all of these things. I think there's room to allow this delegation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Concerns, comments?
Nicely done.
No other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to resignations. And, but before we do that, and then appointments, I do just want to queue up for everyone. Agenda Item 11 is a resolution, which I would like Councilman Kelly to get ready. Agenda Item 12 is another resolution for Councilman Rosado. And Agenda Item 13 is another resolution that I would like Councilwoman Fortier to be prepared to read. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, which is resignations.
Resignation, Your Honor, is from Thomas Lozier as the Chief Building Official.
So, we are losing our Chief Building Official to retirement, and he is going to be moving on to the city of Meriden. And it's just been a very bittersweet week, knowing that he's moving on, both after his long history here and the real success story that Tom Lozier was, starting in the Custodial Department and now retiring as a department head. So, I'd like to ask everyone to join me in wishing him the best with his retirement from Bristol as he continues on in Meriden. And I think we can all agree that they're going to be lucky to have him. So, is there a motion to accept that resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, there's nothing else to resent or resignations? Okay. So, moving on to appointments, the first one will be to appoint Richard Carter as the Acting Building Official effective November 13th, 2020.
Move it.
Second.
So, we have started the posting process, and I believe interviews are scheduled at the end of this week. We will see how that goes, and eventually, we will be bringing on a permanent Chief Building Inspector, but per state law, I do have the ability to appoint acting, and that's what this motion will carry until we have a permanent position. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to continue the theme, because we're not going to let him get away, we are now going to appoint Thomas Lozier as a citizen representative to replace Blake Del Bianca as an alternate for a five-year term through August of 2025 to the Building Code Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I would like to appoint Daniel Mina to replace Morong Danish, Section 2-9 vacancy. There is no term for this, to serve on the city's Diversity Council.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Board of Finance appointment, and it is for David Makowski to replace Michael LaMoth, resigned, for an unexpired term to June of 2022.
Move it.
Second.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is to reappoint Robert Montgomery for a two-year term to November of 2022 for his role as city historian.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a reappointment of Richard Balsam for a three-year term to July of 2023 to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, we have one more name to add to the Rockwell Theater Planning Task Force, and that is the name of Ken Bagley, who will be a Board of Education representative to the group that will be planning the opening of the community theater.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the Agenda Item 11, which is a resolution regarding the application funding and grant for the revised Quality Enhancement School Readiness Grant for $18,756 from the Office of Early Childhood for the period of September 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. And it's a resolution. Councilman Kelly?
Yes. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the Mayor, Ellen Zappo Sasso, or Acting Mayor, is hereby authorized...
Sasso?
Sasso, I'm sorry. Or Acting Mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to the application funding grant for the revised Quality Enhancement School Readiness Grant from the Office of Early Childhood for the period of September 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, including, but not limited to, any amendments to said application and any final funding grant documents and any and all agreements and any amendments thereto with local service providers to implement grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion of the resolution? Hearing none? It will be a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes.
Resolution is approved. Item 12 is a resolution regarding a grant application with the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fiscal Year 2021 DUI Enforcement Grant. Councilman Rosado?
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fiscal Year 2021 DUI Enforcement Grant is hereby approved, and that the Mayor, Ellen Zappo Sasso, or Acting Mayor, and the Chief of Police, or Acting Chief of Police, are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application funding grant, including, but not limited to, any final funding award grant documents. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. The resolution is approved. Item 13 is a resolution regarding a grant application with the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fiscal Year 2021 Distracted Driving High Visibility Enforcement Grant.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application under the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Fiscal Year 2021 Distracted Driving High Visibility Enforcement Grant is hereby approved, and that the Mayor, Ellen Zappo Sasso, or Acting Mayor, and the Chief of Police, or Acting Chief of Police, are hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application/funding/grant, including, but not limited to, any final funding/award/grant documents. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Oh, sorry. Starting on my far right?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. Resolution is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, the approval to submit the grant application with the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety for a clicket or ticket grant and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute and refer to the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item 15 is to amend Contract 2P19-037, Construction Manager for Renovations at Memorial Boulevard Intradistrict Arts Magnet School with Damato &amp; Downs, a joint venture to reflect the amount of $53,46,366.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman Poleski, is this just a technical change?
It's a change based on the budget and what we've modified the contract.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item 16 is approval to submit and accept School Construction Alliance Grant for $1,080,000 for the Board of Education for general improvements throughout the district.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Items 17 and 18 are related to the new businesses that are coming into the Southeast Industrial Business Park. The first one is to approve the real property tax assessment fixing agreement for R. Pelton Builders, Inc., doing business as EcoSmart Home Services for an approximately 12,000-square-foot corporate headquarters and warehouse. So second discussion? So basically, both EcoSmart and BHF Logistics are currently under contract, and we need to do the tax assessment fixing agreement for them to proceed to get their financing in place. So that's where we are in the process, and I believe the attorneys will shortly be working on the purchase and sales agreement as they go through and continue their site plan process. So this one is for the EcoSmart Home Services, which, Justin, correct me, is that lot six? Six, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then the next one, agenda item 18, is to approve the real property tax assessment fixing agreement for Brown Holdings LLC, doing business as BHF Logistics for, again, an approximately 12,000-square-foot corporate headquarters, warehouse, and trucking terminal. And this one is destined for lot two in the Southeast Industrial Park.
So moved.
Second.
Just a shout out to our Economic and Development Director, Justin Malley, who's been juggling a lot of things. These are two great businesses that we're looking forward to welcome to Bristol, so thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we are now done with our main portion of our agenda. We have one, two, we have five executive sessions. I am going to ask the indulgence of the council that we reorder them, since I have a conflict with one of them, and I'd like to be able to take that one last so that I can excuse myself from chambers. So my suggestion would be 22, 23, 21, 19, and 20.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is do 21 first, is because we'll have, for the record, we'll have Attorney Conlin joining us by telephone in executive session and myself on that one, so we can dispose of that one pretty quickly.
Okay.
Number two, the number 22.
Okay.
The fire station possibility, that would be Attorney Steeg and myself.
I would also like to invite in the Fire Chief, Mark Flynn, as well as our Public Works Director, Ray Rogazinski. And just for COVID purposes, if we could avail ourselves of the larger meeting room, it might be more appropriate for executive session.
Okay. Then the third one would be number 23. That was the personnel financial functions issue. Number four would be the executive session, number 19, William Leoni matter. And then, of course, the last one would be the Peter Sasso, because I know that you would want to absent yourself and then probably could just leave the entire meeting.
Yes, I'm going to leave the meeting, and the Acting Mayor, Brittany Barney, will bring you out of executive session and conduct the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Number 20, number 23, excuse me, that would be our Director of Human Resources, Mark Penny, Controller Diane Waldron, myself, I think that's it. Now, for the other ones would be Attorney Lacy, these are on the workers' comp, Attorney Lacy, Steeg, and will be joined by telephone by Attorney Eric Bartlett.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if it's, yeah, I'll go in, I'll go in.
All right, so we need a motion to go into executive session. We will be adjourning into the meeting room to give us a little bit more space. We will be doing agenda item 21 first, which is quick and will require a phone call. And then we're going to do 22 with Chief Flynn and Public Works Director Rogazinski. Then we'll move on to agenda item 23 with the Controller Diane Waldron and Human Resources Director Mark Penny. Then we're going to do the two workers' comp, agenda item 19, which I will sit in for, and then I will excuse myself so that item 20 and any other remaining business for the council can be conducted.
Question for you, are we, when we come out, usually we do all of the executive sessions at once. Were you going to vote on any of these other than the last one? Because then you wouldn't be leaving the meeting. Or do we come out and then we go back into executive session? Why don't we do it that way?
Okay.
So why don't we come out of the executive session after the first four?
Okay.
So that you can conduct that that meeting and those votes, and then we'll, if we could get a motion to go back in, and then you would be able to leave at that point.
Good thinking. So can we have a motion to convene into executive session, please?
So moved.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're ready to have a motion to reconvene back into public session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that no votes were taken within executive session. Are there any motions to come out of executive session to date?
Aye, one, Your Honor. To approve the settlement in the matter of Sheridan Woods Landlord LLC versus the City of Bristol, docket number HHB-CV-20-6059861-S, and the stipulated appraisal, appraisal value of 3.9 million.
Second.
Discussion on the motion for the stipulated tax agreement? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this point, I am going to recuse myself from the balance of the meeting and turn over the running of it to Acting Mayor Brittany Barney, who will reconvene you into executive session. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Mayor.
Good night, Mayor. All right, so if we could make a motion, please, to reconvene into executive session, please?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
We'll be in the executive session, and Attorney Clift is already in the executive session room. So can we have a motion, please, to convene back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Please let the record show that there are no votes taken into an executive session. All in, I already did that part, sorry. Are there any motions to come forward out of executive session?
Yes, Your Honor. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of Peter Sasso versus the City of Bristol, WCC number 601049327, and any other open workers' compensation claims for the total consideration of $70,000, $10,000 of which is for any workers' compensation claims, and $60,000 is for the open heart and hypertension claim. I further move that the Corporation Council or Assistant Corporation Council be authorized to effectuate the settlement and any necessary documents.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If there is no other business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you.